I'm going to call to order the Culver Town Council meeting. Tuesday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Go call please.
Mr. Clevenger?
Present.
Bill Giffens?
Here.
Bill Ham?
Here.
Sally Richardi? Your. Rich West?
I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to announce that this meeting that's being recorded and your participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded. And it will be reca- it will be rebroadcast on our town YouTube channel. This time, people online and in the room, please mute your phones. Moving on. Approval of the June fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Executive session minutes and the regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by Sally Richardi. Any discussions or additions or deletions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of the May financial reports. They have been out and has everybody had a chance to review them? Has anybody got any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I would move the way of giving the May twenty twenty financial report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Sally to approve the May twenty twenty two. Financial reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Park improvement bid award. Thought that, uh. I thought Mike was gonna be here.
Mike Reese?
Yeah.
Don't see him.
Do you want me to try calling him?
I don't see me either.
No, that's not Mike. And neither is I.
I know, I know Jenny had sent out his notes to everybody that are, I don't know if everyone got a look at it. But about his recommendation for how we move forward. He sent me an email. She included everybody on it.
I know. I'll see.
I received his report.
I, I know, well, I think we all know that the low bid was with Thomas Excavating, which was five hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. But Park had planned on a figure of around four eighty, is that not?
Four eighty-five.
Four eighty-five. And I think what he was gonna tell us tonight was.
To go with that amount.
To go with that and what we're gonna do is cut back some things off of Thomas Excavating.
So the recommendation for Mike Reese was that essentially, yeah, same thing. We had planned for four hundred and eighty-five, they came in at five thirty-one. Jenny and I had cut back on a few things. You know, initially we thought maybe getting rid of sidewalks that led to the pavilion would be a good idea, however, that would only save us four thousand dollars and we don't feel that's a good cut considering the benefits to four thousand dollars. So the recommendation would be to move forward with the five thirty-one, five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar bid. We will seek additional funding. I know Jenny has reached out to members on CRC. And for that to be voted on because they had put in sixty thousand originally, so and they had recommended that we come back if we didn't meet the amount.
Oh, okay.
So hoping that they are in favor of that. We have, we have to wait unfortunately until that meeting. If they can reach that amount, we will, because it only, it won't be sixty thousand, we are forty-three thousand in need based on that number. So we'll be asking the Culver Redevelopment Commission for that funding. If we do not get it from the Culver Redevelopment Commission, then we will have to cut back on the project.
So those are the two options that'll happen?
Yes, yes, but to move forward because with Thomas Excavating, because it is the lowest bid and they are, they wouldn't meet all the requirements for the project.
And that's all been taken care of through Mike, he's been viewed it all.
Yes, yes, Mike.
We're good to go there.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I have problems with that. I mean, I think, and I understand what you're saying, Amber. I mean, we're basically approving a contract that is not funded at this point in time.
Yeah, if you prove it, you're gonna have to prove it conditioned on funding and.
In terms of the cuts. Sidewalk. Because they hate liability.
Correct. Yeah, we could still meet requirements for Oprah, like the, you know, to what degree are we ADA accessible? I, I think we'd like to keep it in the.
I would be more comfortable if we had. Such meetings, we need to do that up as a question of timing.
Yes.
Is Thomas's bid for ninety days or sixty days, you know?
I do not, no, no, I don't.
I know that our next meeting is July twelfth. However, Redevelopment's meeting on the eighteenth. So we would basically be delaying any approval until second meeting in July, which would be the twenty-sixth.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend we wait until the twenty-sixth, like per the timeline of. Cause we have to let Thomas Excavating know because I know playground equipment is on backorder significantly, so they would have to start ordering that equipment because we're already probably not gonna meet construction deadlines as is.
Four months is what the lead.
Yeah, the lead time, yeah.
Four months is what it takes to get the playground. Bought them today, it'll take four months to get.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tony, what do you think?
Well, um. Rich isn't, I don't know what the rest of you. Uh, you certainly shouldn't accept it without a whole bunch of conditions, but maybe the thing to do is, uh, move to not make a decision tonight so that everybody sees the recommendation of Reese and see if you can get Thomas Excavating to confirm that their bid is good till some date after you'll know.
And we can let people know that on the twelfth.
And you can let people know on the twelfth.
What do you think?
I'm good with that.
Okay, is there a motion?
The motion is to.
Delay.
Delay the decision on the award tonight and seek confirmation or agreement from the low bidder that his bid will stay open past July. Tw- twenty-sixth or whatever. Yeah. So moved.
Second.
And that means we'll come back on the twelfth, hopefully the.
On the twelfth, you'll know whether they, how far they're willing to extend it and.
So basically, we're gonna. We're gonna delay the acceptance of the bid till July twelfth, pending further discussion with Thomas Excavating.
Or, oh, we have until. I imagine the construction will go until the spring.
I'm not talking construction, I'm talking to be under contract. A lot of funding agencies have.
Right, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not. I don't know.
Um, we can always call a special meeting too.
Uh, Troyer Group will know that, Mike will know that. I didn't, I didn't see his recommendation, so. Okay, no.
Can't you have the CRC meet before the twelfth?
And that's a possibility.
That's another possibility.
We don't, we can't decide.
We need to get, we need to get with Mike first and Thomas Excavating, and then we can always move the meeting schedules around to accommodate. Good point. Okay, motion been made and seconded to basically hold off till July twelfth in talking with Thomas Excavating and, uh, like Reese from Troyer. About construction on the park.
Amber, he says that Oprah requires it be under contract soon. Bill or Jenny know.
Yeah.
Yeah, let Karen know and we can set another meeting.
I will definitely give Mike and Shannon a call tomorrow.
Please.
Clarify everything.
Yeah, cause I thought Mike was gonna be here tonight, I really did.
Okay, and I'll make, and I'll make sure that recommendation document gets out to all of you tonight.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. I think we've had our discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
And then you're gonna have Mike contact. Get Thomas to find out if they're extended.
Yeah. Yeah.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interject.
No, 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 I did say all in favor, didn't I?
Yeah.
Keep this out of the bubble.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we're gonna go to the Fiber Hut update. As Jenny has said in the past, uh, we've been. Probably saw. Jenny's emailed everybody about the Fiber Hut and, you know, the, our agreement with RTC and REMC about putting this here out by the. Garage. One of the main things that. They asked for in that, uh, original. Agreement was they wanted a fifty-year lease. Jenny told me that and, uh. You know, I was thinking more than we were gonna do leases in the ten to twenty-year timeframe and I asked her to go back to them and. Close that option and then we get a. Another email back saying that she talked to the person about the length of the term. He said they would push for twenty-five years for the length just because they believe it is going to be around far longer. Any opinions?
I'm wondering if the technology is gonna change.
That was my point.
Over that period of time.
That was my point on a fifty-year.
Yeah, that was the initial thing with the fifty-year lease. New rule of it was contingent upon how the FCC or something on line broadband or something that's fifty years, and it's like. Something about the compact.
Yeah. Last time I did a fifty-year lease, it was in China. They don't do anything less.
No.
It'll, it'll probably change well short of twenty-five years, to be honest with you.
Do we have a revised?
It's, right now, it's in the, it's basically a negotiation, they, you know, they wanna do fifty, you know, she threw out ten to twenty and they came back at twenty-five. You know, that's why I'm saying, what do y'all think?
I wouldn't have a big problem with twenty-five, mainly because they're spending a bunch of money. On that, on the property. If they don't have a lease. Out, you know, the life of the building. They could decide not to build it.
Well, and in, and in that hut, uh, I understand the cost of that hut that they're gonna bore bear is like seventy-five thousand dollars. And with us looking at broadband right now, we're gonna need a bigger hut. And the cost of that hut can go up to probably around a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand, that's what I've been told.
I have one of the, one of the, um.
And they, and that's what we wanted to do with the broadband, you know, to connect the broad, tie the broadband into that hut.
Yes. I thought that was one of the provisions we were asking for was. Um, with REMC, is that?
Yeah, RDC and REMC, yeah.
That they would permit, um, either the expansion of that hut or accommodating space within it for whoever our contract is.
Right.
Of broadband services. But I, I think getting those two permissions is fully exciting with Sally. If they add that other provision, I'd be comfortable with twenty-five years, but not beyond that.
Okay.
That's my personal.
Bill, what do you think?
Twenty-five, I think is fair.
Okay. You're happy with twenty-five, way up?
I'm good.
Is there a motion that we go back and they'll agree to twenty-five, that we do that?
So moved.
So the second, motion made by, uh, Bill Ham, seconded by Sally to go back to RTC, REMC and hopefully they'll agree to a twenty-five-year lease instead of the fifty.
With the condition that they also.
Right.
Oh, yeah, there's lots of other conditions gonna have to be in that lease.
Yeah, there's negotiation right now.
Okay.
Does the motion simply to go back to that?
Yes.
That, that's just the term.
Just the term.
One term.
Yeah, we're just doing the term. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Next. Open the RFPs for broadband. Okay. All I'm going to do tonight is let you know that we have received three bids. I will name the companies in a minute. And. Three proposals, three proposals, excuse me, three proposals. And what we're gonna do now is turn it over to the broadband committee and they're gonna meet on Friday, I believe, this week with Kenny and go through and disseminate all the if where's, where, what fours and how's and a lot of different, uh, aspects of it and then come back and, uh, make a recommendation. Three, uh, proposals that we received were AT&T. Maple Net Wireless and Olinger. Those are the three we've received. So we're gonna turn those over to the broadband committee and let them have at.
You're not going to. Open and read the.
No, because there's just a myriad of. Apples and oranges.
There's just all sorts of things in there.
Apples, oranges and peanuts and crackerjacks. I mean, it's.
Our specifications weren't then very.
Well, there's just a lot of different aspects to it. That's what I've been told, so. That's how we're doing it.
Is the intent to still have more than one, having two terms? Remember when Jenny said to keep each other honest, basically?
No, see, we got three bids to keep each other honest, that's what, that's what she was talking about.
I mean, we got three proposals.
Yeah, I was talking about multiple suppliers of this.
Oh, of, of the, oh, of those.
So they don't jack up the price and we keep, our, our hands are tight.
I guess that's gonna be, you know, a question for the broadband committee.
And I thought that was one of these stipulations in the, in the proposals.
All those.
The fees would be locked in for.
Yeah, per contract.
And then also increases, things like that?
I mean, I didn't. But I thought, it was my understanding.
Okay.
That maybe were some of the.
I just wanted to bring it up.
I understand. So that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna turn it over to the broadband committee. And they'll report back and hopefully we'll know something on, uh, July the twelfth.
Is this, I just asked the question, now we don't think necessarily make a decision, but I mean, this, I would suspect it's going to be a fairly comprehensive discussion and it, should we have a work session with broadband committee after they, they digest it or?
And I don't, and I don't know how long it's gonna take them to digest it, so, I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay.
We can do that certainly before another council meeting. Point well taken. Okay, next on the agenda is open the community crossings bids. Mr. Porter? Okay, the first one is from, uh, Milestone Contractors North. South Bend, Indiana.
Looks like a bid bond.
Looks like the total amount of their bid. Is. Five hundred and fifty-nine, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Second bid is from, uh. E and B paving. E and B paving. It looks as if. Their bid is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Did they bid on all the streets?
Well, what we're gonna do is turn it over to Bob and let him review it. And report back.
I would make that motion.
On the, uh. Well. Motion made by Rich West, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is to, to read the bids, turn them over to. Mr. Porter and have him review them and report back. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a town manager's report. Which everybody has already. Councillors received in their box. Or online and what I'm gonna do here is. Not go through it line item by line item, but basically say that a lot of it's just been reviewed, we talked about the, uh. Parks and the community crossing and broadband. And after that. Post everything else and then report it to the status updates. So unless, since you all have a chance to look at it, but everybody agrees, we're gonna move on.
I would move on or enter guests at the.
It will be, and I will, at this time, let everyone know, if you haven't heard, that , uh, Town Garden Lake is down. Uh, it has been taken off by Google. Apparently someone within Town Garden Lake, so we suspect, complained to Google that there was malicious activity and they don't like that, as we've heard nationally, and they have the right to just shut a. Account down, so.
So.
They don't like the cornfield, I don't know.
Fourteen hundred users are now incommunicado or not.
You got it, this happened yesterday. Uh, I talked to Tracy Fox this afternoon, as y'all know, she's based, she's the administrator for. PGL and, uh. He has talked to, you know, Google and she even has a, a acquaintance that she knows fairly well at Google and she's trying to go through that person to. Find out, you know, who what we're winning high and what do we do? And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, but told me that, you know, what she might have to do is just start over. And come up with another. Account. So. If we can, if she can get it correct, if she will, if she can't. We'll see what happens, so stay tuned. Sorry to have to pass that on to everyone if you hadn't already heard, but if you haven't seen anything on Town Garden Lake and tried to post something, you know, don't know what has happened and why. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh. Department head report. EMS? Jeff, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone, it's Jeff. Uh, I have a couple of things for you tonight, a couple of approvals and just some general information. I'm in Missouri right now, as most of you, some of you may know, for the midpoint, everything went well, everything's going well and we'll be taking delivery on the ambulance, um, by the end of August. Don't have a definitive date, they're just saying the end of August. So everything is looking good, it's on track, so we will have that in, uh, our possession here within a matter of, uh, well, a couple of months. Uh, the second is, uh, we all know the, uh, supply chain issues and, uh, a variety of other issues regarding that. With this current bid, uh, we are trading in the, uh, two thousand nine. Ford ambulance. The trade-in amount that we got was, uh, five thousand dollars for that. With recent changes in the used car market and availability, there is a chance that I can, um, possibly get the unit for a, a much higher amount. That with your approval, if I can go out and try to find a, another buyer before we take delivery, basically, we'll have about thirty days after we take delivery. We're looking that there's a potential that we could get anywhere up between thirty and forty. While the unit is in, in rough shape, uh, the, the need for temporary units have increased due to the supply strain issues and so some people are, might be willing to put in the significant, significant amount of dollars that may be needed. But also allows us to, uh, make a little bit more, uh, from a market than when we bitted it out was, was fairly just drained and was giving such lower amounts. So if you would, uh, would give me approval, I could then go about starting to see if we could find a buyer for this ourselves. With that being said, we would then just have to pay the, uh, pay the additional five thousand, um, when we do buy it, but that would be offset by whatever we would make on the vehicle, but before anything would be finalized and official, then I would bring it back to you for final approval and sale if that's, uh, what would happen here.
Is there a motion to allow Jeff to put the, uh. Ambulance out? I'll move it, uh, we give Jeff. I'll move it. We give Jeff the, uh, opportunity to shop the used ambulance. I guess we call it the used ambulance. The second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Bill Hamm to allow Jeff to without forbid the used ambulance? And any further discussion?
Well, he didn't say put out for bid. He just said try to shop it.
Buy a buyer.
Yeah, well, that's amazing.
Yeah, but, uh, if you bid it, that's true. But he, he may want to try it.
No, I wouldn't go out to bid with it. It would be more just trying to find, uh, some local to regional buyers that may want to take it. One of the transfer services, private entities that will buy, uh, these units and still continue to put tons of miles on it and limp it along as far, as long as they can um, in that line of work here. So it wouldn't be out to bid. It would just be soliciting, seeing if anyone would be interested uh, through a variety of different locations.
Trying to find a buyer. That's still that's your motion?
Yes.
Bill, that's your second?
My second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, Bill Hamm to give Jeff the opportunity to shop the used ambulance with other communities. Any other discussion, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, the final issue is we, uh, did this at budget hearings last year and approve for this year was the, uh, the additional full-time person. As we're trying to weed down the staff and, uh, throughout this first part of the year here, I was looking and put it out through the internal part of the department. And, uh, had a couple of people that were interested and then ended up changing their mind. But I was able to finally narrow it down to one person here, uh, moving forward here. I'd like to, uh, change the status of Wesley Coulter from, uh, part-time to full-time, uh, effective, uh, July sixth. So I'd like your approval to, uh, allow that to happen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Rich to move, what's her name again?
Wesley Coulter.
Wesley Coulter.
Wesley.
Wesley, oh Wesley. Wesley Coulter from part-time to full-time, uh, effective on July sixth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
I don't have anything else for all of you unless you have something for me.
Anybody have anything for Jeff? I think that'll do it. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much, all of you. And, and, uh, Bill, I did get your email. I'll get that out to you probably, uh, tomorrow.
Thanks.
Thanks again. Have a nice night.
Fire?
Uh, the only things I got are just kind of smooth reminders for the July weekend. Busy in our town. Drought. Is in our town. And fireworks. So I don't know what else to say. It's gonna be a weekend to have a feeling.
That's it? Thank you, sir. Wayne, are you on? No way. Park?
I just have these. So as you guys are aware, um, we were granted funding through the IPDC Public Art Activation Grant. That's developed over, um, but I wanted to keep you posted. So, uh, this is the survey we had drafted up and you can, sorry, I have three copies, but, um, these are all the mural designs we'll be putting out and we're doing, uh, a public survey with all these murals, but I just wanted it to be on your radar to let you guys know the plan for what mural and art will be going up on that, uh, West Pavilion Shed. So that's, hopefully that survey will go out by the end of the week. We're gonna do some public input and see what people want on that shed there. So just for your information. Yeah, that's, it'll be going out, um, virtually and then also I'm sending it to newspapers so people can fill it out. And then, or, uh, those copies will be posted at Town Hall for people to go for which mural they'd like to see put on the Pavilion Shed.
You already got someone to do that.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, they will be here. We're, we're hoping, um, that the muralists will be here July twenty-second. Um, and that's in coordination with the Indiana Main Street Exchange Event that Developed Pulver's hosting. Um, essentially other Main Street organizations will be coming that weekend. And Developed Pulver will be hosting them and collaborating on Main Street initiatives, issues, et cetera. Uh, July twenty-second to the twenty-fourth is actually a really big weekend. Uh, we've got the Indiana Main Street Exchange Event, the muralists will be in town. Um, the Waterways Exhibit Grand Opening is that Saturday. Um, I know it's like the corn roast, Environment Festival, um, so it'll be a really good weekend. So, um, I drafted up like a, spend the weekend, uh, July twenty-second to the twenty-fourth and it'll be going circulating. Um, communication is a little bit different right now without TGL, but, um, it'll be going out. So I'll be sure, sure to share that all with you. Um, and any questions about the mural or anything? Um, and then we did close yesterday. Um, the staff went and played people. So just wanted to thank you guys for letting us close yesterday and it was a lot of fun. So, thank you.
That Waterways exhibit will be at the library.
Yes, yeah. Uh, July twenty-third through September fifth.
Right.
You can see the Waterways Exhibit, which is through, um, Indiana Commandees, uh, the Smithsonian Waterways Exhibit. And then the companion exhibit is the Vonnegut Exhibit. So the speaker on the twenty-third is Chris La Farve, um, from the Vonnegut Museum. So he'll be there at the grand opening. And there's various other programs. There's three other programs, another speaker, a kids program and a water cruise associated with the, with the event, but all that info is on the Find Pulver page.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Utility.
I just have one thing for you. I have the opposite problem with what Jeff said. We put two vehicles out for bid. One of them received a couple of bids and sold to start. One received no bids, was looked at by several counties, several fishing companies. And we got no bids on them. I have one employee that is interested in purchasing it for a reasonable sum. I wonder if you guys determine if that was, be something you guys would be interested in.
Do you have any idea what the market value?
It's, it won't even, it won't move. It'll pull itself, can't drive it. It needs a computer. It needs nobody wants it.
Okay.
To me, it has no value.
It's clear.
Basically, yeah.
You could probably offer whatever you're grappling with, but I don't know if you guys, whether you want.
All we're basically doing is saying yes. If somebody wants, employee wants to bid on, give us a bid and we'll come back next time and say yay or nay.
I don't have any trouble with that. I mean, we have found another buyer on the market, so.
Well, it's not that he hadn't tried.
I know.
So you're gonna find that it's a, uh, no value, worthless, and you'll sell it to the employee for whatever you'll give and get it out of the air.
Probably. Thank you. Unless somebody wants to put a minimum. You just gotta get the, I mean, if somebody wants pull something out of the air and say something and if not, we'll just accept whatever comes in. Your motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, basically, we're gonna allow.
I have determined though that it's no value and worthless and so. Is that your motion?
Yep. Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay?
Yeah, I did aye.
Next, we got boards and commissions. Plan Commission?
Go ahead and do Plan Commission and the, uh, or zoning appeals at the same time.
I got some BZA stuff, so.
Okay. As far as, uh, in commission goes, um, continuing to work with Attorney Cerise on some unsafe buildings and properties. We have regular updated meetings scheduled with her, so that's ongoing. Big construction. I found two jobs, uh, within the last week that, uh, did not have permits. Stop load orders on them. In the process of doing it, I was working on checking on all construction going on with the permits that have been issued. If the jobs are going on in the town. So we want to make sure all construction. Plan Commission, we had one case in June, no cases for July. Plan Commission is continuing to work on language updates and corrections to the zoning areas.
Okay, on BZA, we have a vacancy on the BZA, as you all may know. J.D. Hubler, who was the Secretary of the BZA, was recently appointed to the Town School Board. And, uh, by doing so, he had to resign from the BZA Board. Cause it is considered too lucrative positions. But he doesn't get paid for BZA, but state statute, as I found out, that's the only one that, uh, qualifies as a non-paid lucrative position because of the control that someone, that the BZA has on Board of Zoning Appeals. So we have an opening on, uh, BZA Board, so we would like to go ahead and have Karen advertise that position. And have applications due, uh, by next board meeting, the twelfth of July. At which time we'll accept those applications and we'll talk, uh, probably interview them like we have in the past and make a decision at the July twenty-sixth meeting. That's a motion. That, to allow her to, you know, a post the decision.
So when she made the motion. She did, I'll make the motion.
Sounds good.
Second.
She's done a good job of, I'm reading it. By Rich, seconded by Bill Hamm. Close the, uh, open position on BZA. It is a council position, not just the president. So it's whatever the council decides. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. You got something else for BZA?
Uh, just, we had two cases in June. We've got two cases scheduled for July. And, um, we definitely need that extra board member because we had a, somebody that hadn't recused themselves last time and just.
Sounds good. Thank you. Redevelopment.
Basically, uh, we didn't have a lot during the meeting, but part of the meeting had, um, it totally, uh, did a presentation for this redevelopment. Well, that's, um, was that recorded, the, the training?
It's recorded. I saw it.
Okay, it will be available, but I would.
It's available now.
Okay, I could, I can see. She can tell you where it is. Probably on YouTube. Okay. It's not there. She, she wouldn't, Karen wouldn't know where.
I've got it.
That's okay. Alright. That's all I have.
Tree Commission.
As I have reported to you in the past, in the last two years, we've taken down about twenty trees. And, um, Bob has been busy giving us, you know, all kinds of, um, new assignments. So we've got about twenty to take down this year.
I've got another one for you.
Bob never calls me unless he has a tree to turn down. We have, uh, in our, in our last year's budget, we've gotten the price of all the trees except this last one. I hope it's a small one.
It is.
Anyway, we've gotten price to take them down and we have plenty of money in our, in our budget with the town to take that, those trees down and take a few more down. And, uh, we approached the CRC, uh, last week and, uh, they graciously granted us funds to purchase trees. So in the fall, um, we will be in October with the planting between twenty-five and thirty new trees. The trees that are coming down will be all removed, uh, the rest, rest of the summer and into the fall. So we should be pretty close at, at being up to date by the end of the year.
Good.
I have a question. Our, our neighbor on Winfield or, or Winfield Street, um, your neighbor directly, uh, had a tree taken down.
And then ground out the stump.
They ground out the stump and the curb is gone. And all the trees were cut during a wet period and made big dents in their yard. They can't mow because of those ruts. So I don't know what the precedent on that is.
I'm tired Rocky to put the curb back in.
Okay.
As well as, I think there's four panels of sidewalk that need to replace. He's BDA that amped these. Then after that, we'll put dirt. I don't want to put dirt in now, just have to dig it right back down.
I got it. I just wondered.
We're on Rocky's schedule for that. And also the one on Walvest, we saw that.
Yeah.
Sorry about missing there.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Cause I walked by there on my walk.
Yep, I understand.
They're sitting out on the porch. Thank you.
That's why you get paid.
And thank, thank you for the air conditioner. It does.
Clark's report.
I have three, uh, claims over two thousand for your approval. Um, question twenty-five hundred. The first one is the state one, ten thousand, seventy-two dollars. It's already been taken out of our property taxes, but, um, just get your approval for that. And that was for the twenty-twenty audit. I don't know that we'll have another one for another two years. And I'm sure by that time the price will be at least that if possible. Um, Tim Yuhas for three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifteen cents. And that was for pure installation and some repairs. And then Oliver Ford, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. And that is actually out of the redevelopment commission, um, fund. But if Wayne would have been here, he would have told me that he went and picked the, the car, I think, today. So we sent him a so he could get that and get that.
Will we approve those claims over twenty-five hundred dollars?
Made by Rich, seconded by Sally to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. You might all just say too, uh, Karen, if you didn't last time, that the audit went very well and that we, you know, didn't find any problems and you know, kind of, got a, good opinion and Karen really does a great job and the auditor commended her again for running a tight ship. So just to let you all know that.
It is. Something about, like you, something about local governments are required to do the audits, have the State Department of Accounts committee audit and pay for them. There's just something about that.
I know.
And ten thousand, ten thousand dollars to boot.
Then they take it out of our tax dollars.
Uh, probably.
I have a couple of reports into an article that I read about Nebraska where they don't have state.
Oh, and then they got all sorts of trouble. Okay.
I will.
Well, I'm not saying they shouldn't have audits. I'm just saying.
Need audits.
They need audits, but. I'm like, you got.
You're discussing funding. Anything else?
I, we have one other thing. And that is, um, I sent you all out. Actually, I have one other thing, and that is, um, I sent you all out, uh, work, a fire. Firefighter Workman's Comp Policy Proposal, um, and that would change, right now, our volunteers, if they're injured on one of our calls. They're paid and they go through the Workman's Comp, they pay four hundred dollars a week, now for a lot of those guys, it's a volunteer, it was a volunteer, they all have other. Full-time jobs that may be impacted by them getting injured, and four hundred dollars isn't gonna cut it, um, so, the proposal, they, he gave us a couple of different quotes. And they're requesting that we move from four hundred dollars a week to the one that was for a one thousand dollars a week, um, and that, that would raise the annual cost for the Workman's Comp. Up by fifteen hundred dollars, um, Jeff was also, we met with, um, with Joe Stiles from Miller Insurance back. It's been a while, he's been working for us a little bit, um, and Jeff was involved in that one too, because there were questions about like part-time. People in his, his, uh, department, and we found out that if. For an EMT or a paramedic is injured on a call that they're doing for us, when the Workman's Comp is figured out, they, because they're an EMT at another department, they take all of that into account. The difference is because our volunteer firefighters are probably only a volunteer firefighter for us, and then they work like construction or manufacturing or whatever, that other. Um, uh, salary is not going to be figured into any sort of Workman's Comp, so, um, if we could increase it for. Those guys just to, hopefully, it's not something that we have to use, and the guys have been very careful not to, um, but just to have that available to them as, as a.
Can we invite anything, certain volunteer?
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
Hundred, yeah, that's what it is, okay.
Four, four hundred.
And we can.
Fourteen hundred.
It, it comes, um, it basically renewed on July first.
Okay.
So we can adjust.
Okay.
So, and basically the motion I'm asking for is that you approve the accident and sickness insurance proposal for the volunteer fire department benefits. To raise the total disability benefit weekly amount to one thousand dollars with an annual cost of four thousand one hundred ninety five dollars.
So.
Motion made by, uh, Rich and seconded by Bill Ham, based on, uh, Karen's, uh, reading of the motion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. What would you hear?
I wanna hear you repeat.
I know you did, that's why I did what I, that's why I did what I did.
That's all I have.
Does it so eloquent, like. Attorney report.
I don't have anything new to report.
Oh, my goodness.
I have a question, what's the status on the theater?
Uh, we're in, uh. Basically in litigation right now.
Any update on that?
Not at this time. Not at this time, there's a court hearing on, uh. July twenty seventh.
There's discussion.
There's discussion, but nothing concrete. And that's all you got.
Yeah, I, I, I don't even have anything to report.
Anybody present or online for utility shut off or ordinance violation? There are seeing none. Anyone online for citizen input? Just so, state your name. And address. There ain't none, anyone in the room for citizen input? Nancy.
I'm Nancy Miller of Miller's Sweet Corn, that most of you probably know. Thank you, um, and I'm here once again to ask permission to place our sign on the corner, uh, at the flasher. And hearing that news about town going on in Lake, I think makes this even more important than it might have been otherwise, um. With gas at five dollars a gallon, I hate for people to drive all the way out to my house if I don't have any corn available, so, um. I'd just like to ask your permission to, to place the sign as we have for many, many years, I'm happy to report we won't raise the price of the corn. We've decided people have had enough of that, um, so.
Thank you.
I am gonna have to raise the baked goods prices a little bit, because the price of my vanilla has gone in the last two years from eight dollars to thirty five dollars. I know, unbelievable, right, so, but anyway, what I'd like is to be able to place our sign, and we will. Maintain it and be sure that everything's squared away and in line all the time.
Sounds good, is there a motion to allow Nancy to place the sign like we have allowed her to do in the past?
So.
Second, motion made by Rich, seconded by Sally, to allow Nancy Miller to place Miller's Corn Sign, uh, what we have in the past, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carries, any other citizen input? Carrie.
Carrie Chesley, five twenty seven, I have one concern and one comment, uh, concern is that the town of Culver, um. Has put a whole lot of blood, sweat and tears and deserves tremendous accolades for the trail, the bike path. My concern is that, um, I don't think everybody's gotten the message that it's not a driveway, that it's not to be obstructed and just around the corner from us, Bill. Um, we have a neighbor that just seems to wanna park vehicles right in the middle of the trail. And I don't understand it because there's plenty of street space, is there some ordinance that would take care of this or you can?
We are in the process, I think, of getting some trail signs to put strategically placed, am I not correct?
I don't wanna misspeak, but I believe it was passed that you can't drive or park on the trail.
That's probably true, but is it in the ordinance? That's.
I don't wanna misspeak.
That's why.
I know it's been discussed.
But that's why I'm saying, I know we're looking at getting signs and I don't know if they've been ordered yet or trying to come up with designs to put. Various places along the trail that let people know about it, is that.
I have some in hand, are in show, on the shelf that say you can't drag your golf cart on it for ordinance, but I don't know if it would cover. Parking on the ordinance, or all parking on the trail. I'd have to do some research on it.
Well, well, taken, I mean, well.
Cause I've seen people walk down the trail and then have to go into the street.
I understand.
Yeah, we'll spring my bike and do it today.
Thanks for bringing it up, and we'll.
And the other was a comment, it's, um. How's it about community policing, where an officer might either walk or ride a bike, is that? Anybody's ever discussed or talked about?
Never.
I just think the small community of Culver would, would benefit tremendously by an officer being.
With a golf cart.
Not a golf cart, it's a golf cart, this is within the community and not, you just drive around all the time, you just don't, you don't get connected. I don't know what the resources are for that, but what it would do for an officer is as far as qualifications, if. Can't ride a bike, or she can't ride a bike, but some sort of a, a local involvement that, that puts an officer in, uh, face to face with the community, I think would be.
As you can see, that, uh, you know. If you're on foot. You can't go too far from your vehicle unless, you know, in case you get a, an emergency call, you know, like this, this, you may have a fire.
Well, does that, does that mean there's only one officer on duty or?
Generally speaking.
Generally speaking, yeah.
Chad comes down to the beach a lot.
I know, yeah.
He comes down all the time.
I saw him there in the swimsuit.
You can't unstick that.
Okay. Any other? State your name, Patty.
Oh, my name, Patty Stallings, five oh six, East. We had problems some years ago at the park, parking lot, I know you all remember, and, um, just a place to hang out, smoke. And, um, and over by the basketball court all along, and when the town put. You know, he parked his car over by the, uh, the place where he parked his car over by the basketball, he just wandered down. Through the parking lot and then back up along, you wouldn't believe the people that cleared out. That, I mean, that. But, I understand what you're saying, there's a presence of somebody walking periodically.
I'm saying that they can't. You can't exactly start up one end of town, walk to the other end of town. I know my response.
Yeah, we included that parking for police officers this year, which is why there's such a presence now, because they can keep their car up top. And be at the beach, and that's why, it's because they can't be too far from it.
Well, I know Chad, Chad got, the vehicle he drives back, you know, from the repair shop, and so, the vehicle he drives, decal's on one side and the other side is, uh. Uh, he's having problems getting the guy to put the decal on because the guy can't get gray paint or something, he was telling me, so. He drives down the street one way so people can see the, see the, see this, he drives back the other way, so some people think there's two cars driving around town. But, that's pretty smart, maybe we ought to do that with all the vehicles, looks like we got ten vehicles rather than five. Okay, any other citizen input? Council issues, William.
Nothing here.
Sally. William.
Nothing.
Rich. Just to raise it and not to resolve it, but we've had a couple of situations, I think, on the trail. These down, situations like that, I mean, I think. Our last meeting, you were online, heard about it, there's something else, um, that came up on TGNL about it, three being down.
Over the weekend.
Yeah, I talked to Amber about it, it's unclear who really has responsibility, um, and if anybody has. To deal with those, I know during the winter months, the times. I mean, I went out there with.
You can't be on the pro. We have needed a trailer there, but, I did, um, again, I'm not looking to, to resolve with the CND, I suggest, um, some group in, in town, maybe.
We're dating with Amber and Bob, maybe. Some plan for maintaining the trails, I mean, as we expand them, and I mean, the next expansion by the town limits as it crosses.
Right.
And we grow, so I, um.
One.
I'm budgeting for next year, I think timing will be up.
I have nothing, Karen, do you have anything else?
No.
Person to return, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bob, Bob's gonna need.